Yeah, one hundred and fifty.
The council members are all really well miced, but it's like everyone else. So we're going to be over there, huh Dana?
I I'm assuming so, because that's where the camera is, but.
That's where Max is.
Come on, Max.
Okay, so I finally heard that one here. Um, it's not really helpful, but Sarah Dallas sent me all this stuff when I started and I just printed a lot of it. Have you seen stuff like this yet?
Uh, there was like a, yeah.
Is that seen with Mopier?
Uh, I can probably make use of some of it here.
I'll take it back whenever you're done.
Cool.
Uh, if you want to use it to your foot.
And I apologize, because they apparently wanted me to put this in the package, when you didn't send it until like five minutes ago.
Yeah, I feel like this printed on.
That's the.
A bunch of copies, because. Well, let's take a study. Yeah, that's the assessment that was done.
Is this something we've received in the past?
I believe so, because it was at the July twenty seventh council meeting.
Yeah.
Um, last year, so. Thank you, Laurie.
Sure.
This is following, um, because I just, we just had an HCC meeting, so, and then do you want to bring it down?
I don't have any office. It's a little bit scattered, and I'm so lost. I'm really trying, but I know things are gonna fall, and this is so, I should have thought.
You're doing awesome.
We haven't had.
I think we all had it digitally, like, and I actually have it.
Yeah, but trying to find it is a whole different story.
Yeah.
I should have had it in the package.
It's all good. Things to do, and I know.
We have it now, so. And I don't know, I'm wondering if Max can hear us.
Um, oh, he was there.
I did harass him, so he may have come.
Oh, he left, uh-huh, because he was harassed.
I don't know this setup, so this is my first. I talked to Jamie and Christian, I might need you, that's for sure. We can't, we can't hear people, something's not plugged in right, so.
Yeah, it it looks like it's working right now.
So far. And we'll just have to test people, make sure they can hear us, and we can hear them, and.
Um, that makes me think, you know, Jamie oriented Diane, so all this, did she or who hacked that off to anyone?
She did not.
I wonder.
Um, I called Jamie yesterday.
Yeah.
And he he walked me, he talked me through it, but I was upstairs and everything was down here. So I have, I didn't get to test it, but I took really good notes, and I think I got everything plugged into the proper place. And my computer, it's gonna be a sound situation that I'm nervous about.
That Diane didn't, she uh, check out, she.
She was the guru of it all, so it would have been very helpful somehow.
Just some kind of note, but.
Um.
These are the microphones, right? And they said we only needed three, so.
Can anybody on Zoom hear us?
Yes, Lori, we can hear you.
Last time.
Make sure I'm not.
Sometimes the, check if this, if this speaker is on.
Well.
Dana.
Hey, Tom.
I wonder, so it comes from the speaker, not the TV.
Elona has dreamed she was starting to call Violet into getting help insurance.
Oh, my God.
I want to get a computer.
Where is her?
She's like, Violet wasn't having any part of it, though, but I kept telling her it was such a good idea. I, can anybody on Zoom hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, man, we can hear you. I'm sorry, I'm way too excited. No, that is so awesome, I'm so excited.
Good morning.
And I'm afraid that Dana, maybe you should scoot up one chair, just because they can't see you.
You're a little slow.
Or I can, I can, I can put that chair maybe.
No, no, I didn't want.
That's fine, that was, I'm always trying out.
I can appreciate that, that's why I'm gonna stand right behind this little thing right here.
We have five buffs, and we have Tracy and Max and Tyson. The band is all here. Uh, it's about an hour and a half yesterday, boy, is it nice.
Yeah.
Dude. Yeah, the snow's good, I mean, they haven't had a walk in since, nice shit.
Yeah. Doesn't say much to cover it, which is fine.
Oh, we got good coverage there, well. Okay, it's six o'clock, and at six o'clock, I call this special meeting, the city council of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, to order. Roll call, please.
Council member Loretta.
Uh, we lost Tracy.
Okay, we'll move on then.
We had her, and then she dropped off.
Council member Hill. Mayor LaVey.
Here.
Council member Lino Leo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yeah.
Council member for Gentee.
Present.
Council member Farb.
Yes.
Now wait, see if Tracy comes back.
We'll see if Tracy gets back on.
Thank you.
Okay, does everybody have anything they'd like to add or subtract to the agenda? Not much to subtract, but any else that you'd like to have on the agenda? The other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 New extensions, thank you, all in favor. Uh, this time, housekeeping matters, anything anybody would like to discuss?
I did my best to follow along with the oath last week via Zoom, but is there anything I need to do with that, since I live in Inceville?
Uh, not really, but I do have a oath that I just have you sign.
Okay, good deal.
Uh, remind me to do that before we get away to them, maybe you'll have a copy, and I'll have a copy, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I saw your email, Mr. Mayor, about the, to the S T Rs about the tax, thanks to get Max together. Uh, any updates there, has that been communicated out, or?
We, we, uh, on Wednesday night, um, Muti Red set out a blast, uh, to, to, uh, short-term rental homeowners. Um, and then on Friday morning, we did a mail, uh, to all, not only short-term rental homeowners, but also lodging establishments.
Okay.
Did it all at the same time.
Right, I was gonna ask if there are any sectors that would have been missed, like hotels versus S T Rs, or?
No, there are only nine lodging establishments that are not S T Rs in the city limits, as far as we could, we could tell, we've done, we've done, you know, some research around that, and we have, and Muti Red has. So we think, we think we have it.
Um, did we arrive at a final plan, or is that something you still need?
I made, I made one up.
Okay.
Well, I went with, uh, we would, we would waive, uh, the, the, uh, reporting the taxes for those, all, um, lodging establishments, including short-term rentals through January.
Okay.
Uh, they would start reporting on February the fourth. Now, as a city council, we're going to need, in my opinion, and this is the city council's decision, I think we need to make up the difference, uh, that, that would have been lost.
Yeah.
Uh, for the two entities to whom, uh, that money would have gone, but, um, we, we will know what that number is. So, I was in a meeting, but also, sort of mature, we found that. He said that Muti Reds was going to be able to make a line for January, what, what we would have owed. Uh, that was, that was requested, requested by Donna, it was actually Donna's idea, uh, to do that, and, and Donna and all met, we put the letter together. Uh, so, and, and that is our hope, that they report January, but they don't have to, they let it be where it was, we don't have to guess.
An establishment had been correcting this tax.
Hey, John Hennig, you, uh, you muted, uh?
I'm, I'm muted.
Okay, somebody is not, then.
I think it's Jane.
There will be a public comment that's in the wings waiting.
Okay, good.
Appreciate the immediate action.
Yeah, we had to, obviously, we had to jump right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, at this time, uh, we would, uh, love to hear from the public, is there anybody in the public who would like to make, uh, comments on items not on the agenda?
Kayla, my.
Uh, Kayla, would you like to comment?
Sorry, uh, Mayor, did you just call on me?
Uh, I just did, yeah.
Yeah, um, good evening, Mayor and City Council, uh, this is Commissioner Marcella, and, uh, I just would, would like to take a couple of minutes. Um, I, I understand from some brief conversations from, um, the mayor and Chief Edwards that, uh, or Police Commissioner Edwards, that, um, the city is not going to participate in the opioid settlement on a local level, um, and, and defer to the regional level, and, and I think that there's still some time for the city to renegotiate, um, and sign an M O U for the opioid settlement to receive dollars locally. It's my understanding from, um, our brief conversations at the regional level that, um, the money that the city may have received, um, through the local settlement would not automatically defer to the region that they're in, and so, um, I would just, I would just ask the city council to potentially think about reconsidering, um, signing the M O U and, and joining the settlement, and perhaps we could explore options of, um, that money being passed through money to the county, which we would pass through portions of our money to the, uh, to the regional efforts as well, just to try to have a larger impact, so, um, just, just curious about, um, if you have any room for reconsideration, or if you'd like any information on what's happening at the regional, regional level, and if anybody from the city or the municipality would be interested in participating, um, in our Regional Governance Council, there's still a spot open, um, for city participation as well.
Thank you, Kayla, I would, I would tell you, and, and I'll bring this up with our, with our city attorney, we did, on the advice of our city attorney, uh, discuss it and make a decision. It was going to be, the city was going to receive, this is what we were told, around six thousand dollars over a three-year period. And, uh, based on what we know about this settlement, and what would be required to, to be able to accept that money, is that, that the, the administrative burden, uh, would probably outweigh the benefits. Uh, and we were also told that, that our options were, we, we were not presented with an option that we could defer to the county, and that's one of the things I'll check with, with the attorney.
I think we talked about that, but that we were not, my understanding is that we were not allowed to do that, the option was to send it to defer to the regional group, um, that we would not be able to pool money with the counties, because we, we talked about pooling our, our resources.
Okay.
Right.
I recall that was not.
Okay, uh, but Kayla, I will follow up with that and, 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 and follow up with you, and then we'll, uh, based on what I hear from our attorney, uh, we'll rediscuss it in city council. Uh, our next meeting is next Tuesday on the first, so, uh, I really appreciate, you know, uh, you guys have gone forward with that, I think it's, I think it's important, I don't know what settlement amount you've been discussing, but, but ours was so low, uh, that we felt like it was not worth the, the additional administrative burden, so, that's.
Sure.
Of that decision, and we, uh, we may have put that in resolution.
Okay, um, Mayor.
I will check with, uh, with Cristiana tomorrow.
Okay.
And see what options we may have, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I can provide to you, to some of the information and documentation that we've received from our, um, regional facilitators at the Stedman Group as well, if that would be helpful for you. Um, and, and even if the city does choose not to participate in the settlement to receive local dollars, um, you do have a spot available at the table if you'd like to send a representative for the, the regional council, um, and governing body of the, of the settlement, so that, that's still on the table if you'd, if you'd like to consider that.
Okay, thanks, uh, I will check with Cristiana tomorrow, and then I'll reach out to you and see if there's an opportunity in the next couple of days for you and I to, to sit down.
Okay, that sounds wonderful, I really appreciate your time this evening, everyone, um, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to make?
Okay, I think we should be good now, sorry about that, go ahead.
Okay, do we have anybody else on Zoom who would like to make, uh, public comments? I don't have any agenda, so, uh, raise your hand, or, uh, put it in chat, or just unmute, talk to us.
Are you done?
Gavin. Commissioner Bulba.
Um, I just want to let you know, I'm here listening, and I'm happy to participate a little bit, but I'm home with kids without a partner at the moment, he's gone for the week, so I'll do the best I can to kind of chime in, I know it's an important collaborative issue.
Okay, thank you, Gavin. Anybody else? Okay, Nina, uh, we will move on. Uh, at this time, we have a resolution, uh, this is, uh, you know, I'll give you the background of this, uh, this is a, 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 you know, but, but actually, take a look. And, uh, it came down to the I D As that I saw a week or two ago, um, and they, you know, I couldn't realize that I could be taking these steps, but, you know, I thought my. We were done with it, uh, turned out Cristiana had not seen it, she's now seeing it, she has, Chris now, uh, very quickly, but we can still verify the change to Cristiana's app form. Uh, they have incorporated this, and this is, uh, the government, the city council, the basically, uh, expresses, uh, this, this partnership with Dolan, They're basically, uh, express this, uh, this partnership for Dole. Um, for this brand office, sixty-five thousand dollar share. Uh, our share, uh, it's a struggle here. It's exactly about a six thousand or something like that. They've got one hundred point five. Uh, and so, and then the, the Dole contract is also incorporated in this. Um, and if anybody has any questions on this or concerns, let's, uh, let's talk about it now.
This is probably the only one.
Yeah. This is the one where, uh, my leader, he's scared. Uh, has been working on this in the cabinet. And they sent out. A little game called, not an R T, but, uh, were, were two different, uh, uh, works. Books, uh, will be part of this. Uh, I don't know.
And so we have not been awarded this, but it's just before the application.
That, that is correct. This has to be. In fact, that's why we're not delighted because apparently at the, uh, uh, extended, uh, time limit. So I'm all.
Okay, um, something happened to the volume on their end.
Max, did you hear anything?
Did somebody put anything over a microphone?
No, 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 no.
It was very clear and now it's actually, uh, almost seems muffled like there's a violent, like, I don't know what happened to it, but, uh, it's not just.
Is there a way the microphone could go in the middle of the table because I can hear the city clerk fairly well and my guess is the microphone's on her side? Well, the microphone is in the center of the table.
That's working. Yep, that's not working. It's not plugged in.
Switch back to the other one. Okay. Max, how's that? Your cell? Still not. We're checking to see if the system is plugged into the wall. It's an I D.
Dana, can you check to make sure that the cable is actually plugged into the microphone on the table as well?
Yeah, check.
They're all just three at the front and then. Oh, this is the TV too. Actually, yeah. It was working. I don't understand why it's not now.
Lori, do you have another microphone? Normally I think they set up a couple on this table. You can plug more than one into that audio interface if that's helpful.
Right. I have three plugged in right now, but I think.
The other one.
Somehow. See this well?
Yeah, we can hear that one, Christian.
Okay, I'm just gonna move this one forward. Does this one work?
Uh, that kind of sounds the same. I don't think that one. I think it's just getting the other one.
Okay.
Uh, no, that one's not good.
So then this one's the only one that seems to work right now. Um.
Yeah, that's a little better. You can also try on that audio interface, making sure that the little knob is just turned up. Each channel has its own knob, you know?
Yeah, I did that with the mixer thing going on there and I didn't. All of them relatively helpful.
Yeah, with these boundary mics, sometimes you just gotta crank it.
Tracy's back off.
Okay.
Tracy, can you hear us? Now Max here. Yeah.
I can hear you.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna try and continue. I think they're trying to trouble shoot. And see if we can get a little better, uh, volume out of this, but, uh, we're looking at the resolution number six through to twenty twenty-two right now. Uh, this is a resolution, um, approving an I G A between the city and the county for a planning grant. Sixty-five thousand dollars planning grant, which we usually call for eight thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars.
The summary of natural water terms of conditions.
That's under the Dole contract?
Yeah. July.
Yeah.
The grant expiration date is November thirty, twenty twenty-three. But then the I G A says the project will be completed on November thirty, twenty twenty-two. Uh, are those potentially different?
I don't know if they're potentially different, but it's one of the things that there was definitely. The timeline on this grant. So in terms of Dole, I think granted the money, they are given a wider.
Okay.
To find out.
Okay.
That's what we asked.
It just struck me that November thirty, it might be a little short. I don't know. Do you know when this would be awarded, if awarded?
Uh, they want to sort of, and they sent out, they sent out the R T. So the answer is, I think they're prepared to work, uh, I think they feel like they have the. This is standard, they possess some of these three signs. Find out, uh, you know, which of these sites, uh, hold the most protected, uh, for the application. That's true. Yeah, I agree that might be what this is coming on. Uh, yeah, because I understand he has, you know, he has a lot of. They, they were the ones of the counties. Um, so that may be. Just remembering that, well, charge. Yeah. The same need to be done, but often it's. Also, it's like the Dole contract, please, too. So it's just, it's just the pattern, uh, to this idea and resolution. Tracy, Max, any, any thoughts or questions?
It's really hard to hear you guys.
Yeah, sorry. We're still working on trying to.
Yeah, I have no issues with the I G A.
Max? All right. Uh, I don't think they're voting.
Three months to approve, uh, the resolution number six through twenty twenty-two. Resolution. Oh, my goodness. Concerning Dole planning.
You want to add a sentence? Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Harry, Matt, Wolf Hall, please.
Councilmember Watson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mary Robert.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mary Plushman Brain. Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Uh, more of my native son is, uh.
You have.
Reasons to count each other. And the count of the office, there is. Why? All of the bands are here. Parking program. Pretty wide subject, you know, a lot of different things we can consider and discuss. I would like to suggest that at least as far as I'm concerned, that number one decision on, come out of the E T R would be at least. Some I P are coming for, uh, for, for me. Parking programs for people who need. You know. People who are fully impaired, uh, you know, it's not an A D A issue, so much as it is, uh, a, a, an issue overall.
Well, so are we talking about that subset of our, our B permit, permit?
Like, don't think, I think this is different than a parking permit, but it's not.
Well, cause I'm, like, I know, um, you know, it isn't a, it isn't a, uh, an A D A issue, but there are municipalities that have. Accessible parking permit programs, which really are. Uh, somewhat monitored under the whole, um, the way that this gets it with handicap blockers.
Right.
So you can't, my other candy, I'm sorry, Christian, it's not here, just arrest me. Um, but my understanding is that. We can't reserve a public, a place of a public right of way for an individual. We can't say they can, they can park here, nobody else, like, which is what we currently have. But you can take a place on a public right of way for a group, so for an accessibility issue. And so like what they do instead of bringing out, so it's a lot of parking lots, like, you know, with a grant has their handicap parking spots, but they also allow those to apply for. A sign like that. And they kind of look at the very same thing they've been wrote for, and they have doctors on that says, yes, this person needs. Uh, you know, because of mobility issues or because of, or. Chronic disease or whatever, they have to be closed. And so the poor residents can ask for essentially. A what looks like a handicap parking spot at their home, but the, the, the problem out there is that means that anybody who has a handicap pad can park there. Uh, but if you don't have one, you can't. If they know that, you can't park there.
You say, if we put it in a program that passes the whole time, and it said, uh, this space is reserved for.
This is the computer. I think it's this one. This is plugged into this. This is plugged into this. This is. Okay.
Yeah, so I had a city parker. If you don't have that, what I could do is maybe, you know, stop.
So my, my belief at the back of the question, it's the very same program that you apply for a sign in front of your house. Uh, or that the, that I'd say, capable of applying to, you know, mark them up there or whatever. Do that. Essentially, it's a, it's a program where individuals can apply for signs on their. For them, but they still have to go through the proof and get the form signed and so, you know, submit like some sort of proof. That they need that one parking, like, parking spot, you know, a visitor with a handicap. Flapper could also park there. We can't, otherwise it gets too close to, this is Dave's parking spot.
So Dan, your question, though, could be reduced that group from everyone with a handicap driver to, like, this. Resilient, why do all the handicaps park there?
Well, that would be, it would be a city flapper that, that wouldn't say handicap, but. Tell me what you have.
No, that's, that's what I'm, I'm.
This would be a tech handicap, it's not some sort of, yeah, a handicap. But it could be issued to residents of the city or level. Therefore excluding just the one handicap.
I think that's a question for Christiana, because it's a high line where we say we organize like this for proof versus. Right.
Well, but I like the idea of the flapper, even if a handicap, you know, first one, a handicap, I have five minutes. Could probably, I think that would, that would seem otherwise.
I think so too, unless we have like a giant convention of.
Right. So I think, I think we'd be safe to, to, um, work under the assumption that then it'd be a very workable solution for that person to get a hole. Both of the time. And then we would have a patient process for that, which is.
Now we're gonna need another employee who processed the same way with S T R. Yeah.
That would definitely be, uh, the silence.
Counselors.
Are they easy forms, like?
Yeah.
So like somebody could come into my office and say, I need a handicap placard. And then there's temporary ones, which I don't think should apply to, but then there's more permanent ones that you document what the issue is. And sign it off and then we send it to the D M V and they get it.
So I have a question is, what do we think the driver could be? Anybody who, who is mobility impaired with a D O L, they got.
Well, that's kind of how this, this.
Probably just near the state. Or is there any, you know, behind the.
I don't think so. I think we want to be a little more, let's, let's say.
But I, I would say the state forum leaves a lot of latitude, you know, like I, you know, as a physician, have to write down. What the, what the reasons are, like, I've had people come in and say, hey, I'm breastfeeding my baby and I, I go to the store, I don't want to, you know, I thought, yeah, it's kind of. It was, I was add some rather unusual. Well. Oh, it always shows up in the file. I think it comes off, I think it comes off, the, the, but I'll look for it.
Do you think?
Oh, I'll look for it.
Did you get that in for that, what is it? See, I was also thinking, maybe you say that anybody who's over age. For seniors, you know, in the city, uh, could have that, that say by. Yeah, I don't know where the, uh, design, I don't have to think. And say it, it might, might be, people be, uh, more thoughtful about it versus what the state requires. So, so people who are mobility impaired certainly.
But you can get a handicap sticker just on, or a, a plaque or just for being elderly. I know. I would turn you down. You just went skiing today.
Yeah, but you see, our goal, this is, 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 uh, you know, what, how do we think about our community? And Tracy, I hope you can hear me.
But how do we think about, oh, it looks like we lost Max. How do we think about our community and who we want to include in this that might otherwise be excluded in a handicap situation?
Thoughts?
I, I picked up most of it so far.
Yeah.
Um. Step one would be having a form, and step two would be deciding, okay, what are we asking for?
For. You know, taking away.
Right.
We need to have.
So, you know, a classic example of Sue Johnson, she's, she's talked to us several times, City Council, and she, she, uh. Let's say, just say she struggles to get around. She does, she gets around. Uh, pretty admirable, you know, to see people who are really, you know, not doing great, but they, they keep moving and they go. She goes to the senior center and does things like that. She says she really needs that, because like when she goes to the store and it's groceries, you know. Now it's a real problem for her, uh, because of her age, uh, and her condition.
So that's, that's a part of, I don't have clarity.
I can see some benefit if you were like, okay, we mostly just follow the state form that qualifies you. Or if you're over a certain age, you don't even need the state form. You just get one, and it's like saves the other house.
But I think we still need to document.
Yes.
Sure, sure. They, but they would reply.
They still fill out the same form, but.
But basically, they just still have to, the line item that says I'm over, you know, I'm for.
And then they don't have to. Thought you know, the.
Right.
I don't know.
Then they have to, you know, show us the drive along.
And if that doesn't work, I would say we should still take form problems.
Okay. Uh.
Max, you see, you're.
Yeah, we, we might have to use why I repeat. They also, they don't like, oh, they really didn't think about that, really, people who, who are going to use this, uh, you know, I'm not. Yeah, I wish I, I wish I had. I mean, I know that elderly, there are a lot of elderly people who really, uh, I think I never saw, much less afraid to go to the lockdown. You know, a lot to their house. But I think that's, that's important. And even people who are not elderly, uh, but who really sort of live a little. Uh. What do you think, Tracy?
Um, I, I know you're talking about handicap parking. I don't know what your opinions are, but, um.
It's.
No, it's still all messed up.
Mayor, it's not that microphone, uh, apparently there's a missing cable that connects the microphone to the computer. Sounds like Christian is trying to get that figured out.
I think we're gonna have to use the microphone.
He's got the duct tape out, I can see it.
Right now, the best mic sounds like it's from the laptop there for us here at home.
Uh, let's, let's try and use the laptop to the degree that we can. Tracy, is that better?
Not really, and you can't hear Tim at all. I mean, he's so far away. And every time you move your head, it, it's like a train going by, zoom, loud, soft, loud, soft.
Okay, sorry.
You can, even if you can barely hear me, here's where we are. We're trying to decide if we put together a program for, for people who would have. Um, access to, I mean, a parking spot in front of our house. Uh, what Dana said is, we have to be a little bit careful about that, because it has to be, it has to be a group, not a person. That, that were, uh, allowing to have, uh, space and arrival rate. And so we're trying to decide, okay, what is that group? Uh, is it people who are mobility impaired, who are struggling to get in and out of their car, or I suppose get groceries into and out of their house? Uh, is the elderly, is there people who are reading, you know?
Well, so report that, um, the parking consultant stood, does address all of that. And they don't recommend mobility, um, limited mobility because they say it's too objective. And. I can't hear you, sorry.
Well, you want a doctor's note.
I can't hear you. But it does say that, um, accessible parking signs can be installed on streets by request. I assume that means through this, uh, C dot, and it goes through a review process. Um, and I think I heard somebody say that all elderly people can get handicap placards. That's not true. I don't know.
I was saying the Denver, Denver parking program, their accessibility parking program includes elderly. And they use the same kind of approach as the generic Colorado form. But they, that, that specific municipality has expanded that.
So, but we don't have to do that. We can make it. Where you have to have a doctor sign up on it, right?
Yes, the, the general form that we use, like I said, is really broad. Uh, it's. Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it's really, really broad. There's all these different boxes you can check. But it really boils down to, you know, somebody who's severely limited in their ability to walk. Which. Is pretty open to interpretation.
It's openly interpretation, except when it's still what. Would, would a doctor's note? The reason I ask is, you know, people are going to go to some doctors first, you know?
Yeah. That's me sending you the form.
She's ignoring it, doesn't she?
Yes.
Hello, Todd.
It's true, although the, the formal form has a form associated with it.
Okay. Well, we could, we could, it could be challenged the same way, you know, Tracy's would like to see that the short-term rental. Uh, those two short-term rental homes challenged on the basis of their line, them line of their application, so. Uh, I think that's a, that's probably a road we need to go down. I just don't know.
I had had my hand raised, but I'm not sure you can see.
Oh, hi Gabby.
One lesson just from the. The A D A signs is that unless you keep up with. Them every couple of years, homeownership can change and then the signs stay. So there was a great example in Denver a couple of years ago where they went through a bunch of the central neighborhoods and they actually reassessed. Every sign and they got rid of like one third of them and they gained hundreds of spots. Because those people had moved away or things had changed and those handicap signs were kind of just staying around. So that's just one thing to keep in mind is that every couple of years. You need to go through and make sure that those signs are still needed. And then another thing is. You need to go through and make sure that those signs are still needed. And then another thing is, is that. That it's one space. It's not lot line to lot line.
Right.
Because that just we, when I lived in Denver, we had the house next to us had a handicap sign. And they were two signs and they were like lot line to lot line, which was inconveniently like one and a half spaces. So it created this gap, which was really annoying in a really tight urban area that you're losing, you know, 10 feet. So those are just some things to keep in mind with the handicap placards.
And Tim was gonna say, you know, this, this program has been a purely program. Ever since its inception, I don't, I don't see any reason to change that. Do you think that would satisfy the the possibility of people signing?
And while renewal. So.
Okay, at this time, and I don't, you know, we're gonna take a five minute recess. To try and resolve our technical issues, our technical difficulties.
Well, the shame is it's worked fine all along.
Yeah, that was an abrupt change.
Yes, it was.
I'm not sure what the issue is currently. I've tried unplugging it and.
You can hear you super loud right now. Whatever you're talking into is what is coming through to us.
Which would be the laptop.
Okay.
Actually, that's, that's a really good idea. Get it fired up and let's just move over to the dais and and work from there.
Then we don't have any using public money. That seems to be the issue last time. So that should work perfectly fine. And then I can work on this some other time.
It has to be a simple fix because it's worked fine.
I'm not sure why it isn't working. I'd assume it's probably just the computer isn't recognizing the USB at this point, but.
We're still recording, so.
Can you guys on Zoom hear us?
Can hear you. Thank you.
Well, okay, well, can you still hear us if? We all talk.
I can still hear you. I can't see you right now, but I can, I can, I can hear you so like 100 times better. It's clear.
Wait, no, thank you.
And then switching, click on the arrow. Above the camera or where's this video?
The arrow next to.
And then I don't know which one is. I assume it's a lot of type C nine thirty.
That's the webcam is over there. How can I turn this to you? Just.
Try it.
Which one?
The top one.
The logitech one. There we go. Yeah, so I mean, if you.
Just a second. Were you set up at this point?
Yep.
Can you guys hear us? Okay.
All right.
Say, like, these are. These criteria, you know, if you're looking for the, somebody who is elderly, I mean. The kind of people that you're trying to reach are the people who are severely limited in their ability to walk. Due to an arthritic and or logic or orthopedic condition. That's one of the criteria. What?
Then that's in the form.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And if they need oxygen, that's in the form. If they have cardiac issue, that's in the form respiratory issue. And then if they just use a cane, that's in the form. So.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't think he would qualify for any of these.
This is Max. Is there any? Any need to think about like protected classes of personally identifiable information if we're collecting that information?
Not sure I understand the question.
Like, based on disability, like if we're collecting that data from people in a form based on a disability. Is that something where, I mean, we might want to make sure that we're. We're in line with what a protected class is. When it comes to like discrimination.
That makes sense. Does the federal form or the state form deal with that at all?
I can speak to that a little bit.
Please.
I am on social security disability and. All it's, you know, my proof is my benefit verification letter that says that I'm disabled from a certain date. It doesn't discuss why or any of that. I think if you're on private disability, you'd have the same form that just says you are on disability. And to discuss why you are. Does that answer your question, Max? Okay.
I think it answers the question. I don't know if that leaves the door open for anybody who has any kind of disability, which may not be physical at all and. And may not need parking in front of their house access. To kind of a free for all in that case.
The ADA requirements say that. If you say you're disabled, you're disabled. And you have to provide accommodations. And I'm only talking from a job situation. I don't know what the federal government situation or municipal government would have to do. But you do have to, you. If it's a job, you, they have to provide what they call reasonable accommodations. But you can. Protest that, that, you know, it'd be financially infeasible to do so. But that would be a question, I think, for Christiana or Linda. In terms of. The question would be if somebody says I'm disabled and I need a handicap parking sign in front of my house. And you, but they have no. Long term disability insurance or social security saying, yes, you are disabled. Then they might have to provide some. Showing of why they need it. Not necessarily what's wrong with you. Just why you need it.
I think that's a, I think we're talking about two different things. So the parking permit, at least from. Asking for a handicap placard or disability placard has nothing to do with social security disability. It has everything to do with. Demonstrating or having described a mobility limitation. So these people don't even need to be disabled. You know, you could, you could just. Walk with a cane and qualify for a handicap parking placard. And it's, it's a completely different form and a completely different system. So it's, it's different from, say, our crosswalks, which have to be accessible for. You know. Those have to meet ADA standards.
Right.
Requesting a parking permit. Does not have anything to do with the ADA. It's, it's just a state permitting process. And so.
I think it's a little bit of a fine line because the ADA. Does say, if you say you're disabled. You're disabled. Nobody can disagree with you. So let's say somebody. Has epilepsy. So 99% of the time. They don't have a mobility challenge. But they have a fear of walking too far to a car or something like that. I mean, I know that's kind of hard fetch. Yeah, I know. But what if they, what if they need that to get to, you know, somebody picks them up to take them somewhere? Do they qualify for a handicap? I mean, that, I'm just saying there's a, you gotta be really careful when you start talking about disability and handicap. There are people out there just looking at Sue.
I think we were avoiding both those words in terms of this, this program. And quite on, in my mind, at least quite on purpose. This, this has more to do with, with. Mobility impairment and possible age.
When one becomes mobility impaired.
But so you think age should not be, you shouldn't just have a blanket age.
I think, I think that the criteria for the mobility impairment that are in the. Parking permitting program already. Would. I, I mean, I, I think if you're, if you're 100 and you're spry. That's. Maybe you don't need that. But if you're 100 and you have trouble navigating the step up onto the curb. You know, then you have restricted mobility based on what's likely arthritis or some other orthopedic condition. And, you know, that's.
Okay. What does everybody else think?
Yeah, I'm pretty inclined to follow what sort of the standard has already been established.
For the state.
Unless we get into it and realize it just won't work for some reason, but. Unless we have major concerns about it, I would feel better about following it. And I'm presuming Christiana would.
Yeah.
Well, review anything we're doing and.
What I'll plan to do, because I know I just texted that form to the mayor, but I'll send it to everyone on council just to.
Yeah.
So you guys can review it too and see if it would apply or would not.
And then what I would do is, is maybe present that to Christiana and say, here's the intent of our program. Can you craft something for us that meets the intent and still meets the, you know, the parameters of the state form? How's that sound? How's that sound, Max, Tracy? In what timeframe would you like to see something back?
Well, when does our. When's the drop dead date for the?
It's only a couple of months away.
Yeah, it's a couple of months away.
But. We should have an application ready by. Marchish. Yeah, I think you're right.
Because then we should think about, we should come up with steps if we learned nothing from the tax collection issue. We should be able to identify the steps that an individual would go through and who would.
And how to get the word out.
And how to get the word out.
To whom that may apply. Okay. Fair enough. Then. Then I would suggest that. And, you know, we've talked about work sessions, but I would suggest maybe. A work session in February focusing on this and maybe some other parking issues depending on what we discussed tonight. So that we, we can have, be in a position to make a decision.
Max's hand is up.
Max, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, lesson learned from our rollout of the, our tax, our short term lodging tax. I think that we need to make sure we get out in front of this by putting our own press release in the papers and. Getting it on our website and making sure people know it's coming down the pike that. Yes, we're going to be removing those, those parking signs. I believe the date is April 30th. But the new program is focusing on, you know, those who need assistance getting to and from their, their home. And there's going to be an application process. I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is pretty coarse that I'm saying, but I do feel that. We need to get out in front of this. So we start taking those T posts out with the. With the private parking signs and they're removed, that we're not getting a bunch of people. Beating down the courthouse or the city, city hall doors. And throwing their signs and their T posts through the windows and stuff at us. Hopefully that won't come to it, but I just think that we do need to get out in front, in front of this with a communication strategy.
Okay. So I believe we agree on that.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. And. We, we are, we are ultimately going to also talk about a resident permit program as well, right?
We're gonna talk about that tonight. Yeah, but that's a very complicated issue.
So if that, if it comes to it, we might need that communication to say something like. We are prioritizing a plan for those with accessibility needs first. While, while we continue to plan what our resident parking will be, because I think people will want to know that there's something. To replace this or, right? Okay. But I do agree, it's a good idea to prioritize this program.
Well, that's a great point. When we, when we send out whatever information, I always feel like, you know, sending newsletters to everybody is, is. One of the only ways to get to everybody.
Yeah.
You know, the paper is great, but who, who knows what the percentage of people who read that might be. We can send out some email blasts, but also either letters to residences or emails. Or the newsletters to residences, one way or the other. And that should happen. If we meet in February and, and make decisions around this, then we need to implement this in early March. And that gives almost two months. For people to act and react.
I think that's pretty appropriate. Two months is plenty of time to read up on what's going on. Hopefully the newsletters go well. I agree, that's probably the best way to actually reach most people. At least I know people my age, not that they'll most likely need any, but maybe they would. Definitely don't read the papers. So it's, I think it'd be appropriate to do something like a full mess. Newsletter and going through with it.
If we say, what do you think about like individual mailings? To residences, do you think that's effective?
I think we definitely need to individually send those that have parking signs a letter.
Oh, I agree with that. Yeah, and we've, we've done that already, you know, to let them know that. You know, to let them know that the, that the parking permit system was ending in December thirty-first and that the. Signs would be picked up to April, so we have communicated all that.
And I think if we send it out individually, I mean, that just assures, there's like really no way that you didn't see it. Most people. Kind of check their mail, so.
No, believe, believe me, no matter what you do. Uh, there will be a certain percentage of people who will say, well, we didn't know.
Yeah, there there always is.
There always is, but, uh, but that's okay. We always have to try and do our best. Any thoughts, Tracy or Max? Okay, um, sounds like a plan, but when in February would we like to? We have open dates of of the eighth and the twenty-second for possible work sessions. I would say the twenty-second might be more appropriate anyway to have time for for full review and and, uh, you know. That would only be, um, week and a half from now. So would would city council, uh, like to see a work session on the twenty-second? Uh, to to review and finalize this, uh. Well, I'll just call it a parking permit program, an individualized parking permit program.
Yes, that works for me.
Yep.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Hill brought up a point of making sure we have letters going out to individuals who. Have those signs outside their house currently that had been permitted to put those signs outside their house. I, what, what is your thoughts? Just put those signs up themselves. That don't have a permit.
Oh, that's a great question. Uh, they should, they should never have been up, you know, that's an obvious conclusion. So taking them down is not exactly a problem. I mean, you you could be, you could say, well, it's their private property, but it's also illegal private property, so. I wouldn't have any problem with taking all private parking signs down.
Okay, great.
So that, that's an issue I wanted to bring up too, Max. Because it's not just the signs on posts. People have all sorts of different types of signs on their fences, on their. Doors, on their gates that essentially declare that it's private parking. Which is is not allowed, right? You can't declare.
You.
Yeah. So I think, um, are you in communication with Commissioner Edwards about? Probably the amount of enforcement of that that also needs to happen?
We have talked about it loosely. Um, you know, I haven't seen Joe Suarez had like COVID and I haven't seen him in like three weeks, so.
Okay.
I'm not what the status there is, but but also we have now community, uh, service officers.
Yeah.
Uh, in the city. And so what I will do is is that's, that's a, that's a problem we should be dealing with sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And and not waiting till April the thirtieth to deal with it. So.
Yeah.
I would, I would be fine with, uh, talking to Commissioner Edwards tomorrow. Um, about, uh, about dealing with those, those illegal signs.
What about the sign up the street here that says parking for Norwegian zoning?
That's, that's Terry and Carl.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, I would like to read Gabby's comment that she asked us to.
Please.
Um, she says, we need to make sure we build off, off the open house. That we had about this issue before the study and also think through the snow issues that were brought up at that time.
I'm, I'm taking notes.
To elaborate on that comment, um. Is that we did have an open house and I know a lot has happened, like we had the downtown parking study and thinking has evolved. But I just, I don't want to have it be a total rehash of all the same stuff. From the parking open house from, what was that, two, two and a half years ago? And the major issue was how this, how the snow removal and the parking. Worked together and I don't know if we've made progress on the snow removal side to really address some of those concerns that people had. About parking. So. I just wanna, I guess a lot of my work, you get planning fatigue, you ask the same people the same thing every couple of years and nothing changes and they get kind of. Sick of giving their input if they feel like it's, nothing's changing. So I just wanna make sure we're aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that we have, uh, some working conclusions in terms of where we want to go with the, uh. With the, uh, mobility impaired parking program. Uh, what else in this do we feel like we as a city, uh, can tackle? Uh, should tackle?
Can we talk about more having? More public lots? And identifying where we can achieve that?
We can do that. I have followed up after our conversations. I sent out letters to both, uh, Lifetime Fitness and the Community Banks. Both said that they would. Take it further and give back with me and neither have. So, uh, that's one of those items that got on the back burner and I can, I can reinvigorate it. Uh, but I did reach out to those two. Because to me, especially Lifetime Fitness, that that parking area just sits vacant. Uh, but apparently there's has been some resistance from corporate. On doing anything with that. Um, and I've talked to Mike Melly, um, and, uh, you know, he was, um. He's kind of over the Weddell race series overall. And, uh, he said he would take that to corporate and get back with me. So unfortunately, I haven't heard back from him, but I haven't, I haven't pushed it either. And the same thing happened with, with, uh, with, uh. Community banks, uh, where I went directly to the guy I'd been dealing with before. And, uh, and he said he would go to their committee and then get back with me. So. I will be happy to follow up with both of those in the dead of winter. It's a great time to be having those conversations and trying to get ready for summer.
I think another good private public partnership would be First Mountain Bank.
Okay. Did anybody notice that there's a lot? Uh, between the Elks and and, uh, Western Hardware is for sale?
And I just bring, I bring up the whole public parking thing because it seems to me. That we're trying to solve. A parking problem with the parking that already exists. There's only X amount of parking spaces. Now, if we, if we want to really address the problem, we need. More parking. We need more public lots and this was also communicated in the study. It says. This is just in some community feedback that was provided in the study. Your participants were responsible for allocating the city budget for parking and access management downtown. They said they would dedicate the largest share of the budget to city-operated snow removal and street sidewalk maintenance. Followed by making more parking options available for visitors and employees. So ultimately, we need to come up with more parking somewhere in this solution. We need more public parking. We need to identify where we can do that. And if it involves buying a lot and paving it, then I'm all for that.
And that would be the community bank's lot we had to buy. And and it's. It's partially paved, but it's rough.
I I totally agree with those sentiments. From what I've heard at least, parking's always an issue during the summer. Um, and it's not a matter of where am I going to park because most of the time these people park in places they shouldn't legally park anyways. It's more so that we don't have that parking capacity. So I I fully agree with maybe even going through on looking more into that law and. Seeing if maybe that's a possible way we can create some more parking space.
I also think that people would rather. Park in a public lot. At least they know they can be there, they're supposed to be there. Um, I mean, you even have a. A chance at some revenue stream, you can put a little pay station where you entered the lot, enter and exit. Uh, I just, I really truly think that we need that component in our solution. We need more public parking.
Ju- just so you know, uh, Christian, we 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 have negotiated with community banks and then COVID hit. And, uh, it just, it kind of went away, but nonetheless. And then Tracy had an idea that, you know, I was already, I was already talking to to Lifetime about. Using their lot in the summertime and Tracy said, uh, what if we agreed to pay it? For the right to use it when they're on non-event weekends? And and that, uh, that came up because we had heard that they were thinking of paying it. And so we thought, well, that'd be a nice, uh, nice way to to establish that relationship. And maybe enter into a ten-year contract for parking. I don't know.
Was, uh, Ice Palace Park that sort of wrote that parking along the south side of Ice Palace? Wasn't that another place that already exists as public parking that would have better signage?
Yeah, that it could be a matter of signage. Yeah, and and actually, you know, in the summertime, you know, I live right next to the the Tabor Opera House parking lot. It's underutilized, it's underutilized almost all the time.
I was gonna say that too.
So better.
Third Street parking lot is is overutilized, but that's because the people who live in the building next to it park there. Uh, which is.
That issue with those upper lots, those the lots.
So sure.
Wouldn't they, would they be a late more, you know, if they ever do, but.
You know, one thing I'm seeing here is like, it doesn't say on Google Maps that there's public parking there, you know, so I think. That would be a really, that's some low-hanging fruit is to like, make sure that.
How do you establish that with Google?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's not super hard to figure out, I think.
Can you do it right now?
Uh, no. I could look into it.
Okay, sorry.
You, you can up, you can propose updates to Google Maps, anybody can for almost anything. And it usually takes a few days, like I updated a park name in town one time.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, if we could have our, our, the city parking lots that we have.
Yeah. So that would be easy because if, if people are looking at their maps, which they probably are, they see public parking, that could enhance usage.
It'd be Tabor, behind the Tabor Opera House, Third Street and Ice Palace Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and I think signage as well will always help. So I don't think it hurts to put up some sort of signage saying.
Yeah.
Parking pointing narrow towards them.
We do have though on Harrison trying to get people back. Behind the Tabor Opera House because there's also a sign there at the alley.
Right.
But, uh, they're not big signs and it probably could be better.
All right, I interrupt, but Max and I have both had our hand up for quite a while. Max, you want to go first?
Well, Tracy, you can go first. Thank you for letting me, yeah, go right ahead and I'll go after you.
All right, thanks. Um, a couple of comments. One would be. When the Justice Center is built, I think that we need to be an advocate for adding extra parking in there. Because I don't think they're going to use the entire, uh, lot. And also I'm looking at the map here and across Monroe from. The Justice Center is a huge vacant lot. I don't know if it has. The same issues that, uh, Justice Center lot has with, um, remediation and whatnot, but if you're capping it. That wouldn't require remediation.
That's a, that's an EPA site that's been capped. It's also a snow storage site. It's called Apache Talings and it's owned by Michael the Archangel. That's actually his name.
I don't know him, but.
I I've talked to him several times, very nice man.
Maybe he would rent us the lot.
Huh?
Maybe he would rent us the lot.
We, we just use it, you know, and and I mean, no, he he allows us to. You know, he's, he's allowed us to use that for us snow storage for many years.
Would he allow us to make a parking lot out of it?
It's worth asking. Here, here's the problem. I think he thinks, and this happened before my time as mayor, that there's a quid pro quo. Because he wants to build a brick factory at that location. And he's wanted to do that for ten years and he still talks about it. Um, and I don't know how how deeply I want to get into his debt. In terms of his brick factory. Because that, that's never going to fly.
Does he own that whole lot all the way up the hill? To the mobile.
He owns, he owns all the way up to where the, uh, the mobile homes start.
Wow, that's a huge lot.
It's a huge lot.
Okay.
Use, we use all of it for snow storage in the winter. We pretty much fill it up.
Um. Well, snow can be stored farther away if we need parking. I think we, we should consider. Storing snow elsewhere and that's an ideal spot for parking.
We, we don't have alternatives. We have the alternative at the sanitation district, but, uh, we have an IGA with them. Uh, to store snow in the sanitation land there beside Ledville Sanitation. Uh, uh, in front of Dutch Henry Hill, but they've done away with that because now they're going to build a, a dual. Uh, dump station on that land. Um, uh, we can, we can, uh, store up at the top of Eleventh Street, but that's very limited up there. Guy named Dave owns that land. He lets us store snow up there. Um, but that, that's, that's, these are the kind of, uh, things that we're up against. We don't actually have. A great piece of land to put snow on.
But there's one thing to consider is.
What's that?
Do we have to store city snow in the city?
No, but the answer is no, Apache Talings is not in the city. Um, I'm sorry, what?
The other thing to consider is you don't need snow storage in the summer.
Yeah, that's. No, I, I, I agree with that. So summer parking might be a possibility.
Point.
Uh, we would probably, if you, if I could, if I could, uh, reach an agreement with him, we'd probably have to do improvements there for it to be parking. Uh, and we probably have to deal with the EPA in terms of those improvements because that's a capped site. Um, so.
Well, uh, then you're talking maybe like Tim said about. Charging to use that site to recoup our costs if it's going to be expensive to turn that into a parking lot. But my other question is, how much parking do we know how much parking is going to go in at the Justice Center? And if any of that would be public?
I don't have any idea. The Justice Center meeting is tomorrow. I'll be at it. Um, they're, they're trying to put together a design, but I haven't seen any kind of a final design. That's about an eleven-acre parcel. They need six acres, uh, to build what they want to build there. Uh, but in terms, I think, and they're building, um, kind of west of the Star Ditch. So they're leaving the very upper part of that alone. They're staying on one side of the Star Ditch. Um, so they're going to extend pretty far down with six acres. I just don't know that they're going to go all the way to the road. So it's possible, uh, the county's buying that land. It's possible we could discuss a parking solution right along. The road there. I would think it'd have to be tastefully designed, not just a slap a parking lot in there, make it look, look nice. Uh, but that seems like a possibility.
Do they, is that go all the way to Second Street along the diagonal like that?
Uh, it goes to Elm and Elm is a, is a mythical street. That exists along there, although we did do roadwork on Elm. Um, anyway, it, 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 it kind of, Elm runs diagonally across there and then cuts over. Uh, to Second Street. So no, it doesn't go over to Second Street. There's a whole row of houses along there.
Okay.
The back on, onto that Unipacific property.
Okay, that's all I had.
Any other thoughts about possible parking ideas, parking spaces? Any other thoughts about possible parking ideas, parking spaces?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
A couple of things is that, I, I, I am strongly supportive of, uh. Adding to Google Maps parking, uh, as, as, you know, making sure that there's public parking. I also strongly support making sure that there is. Much better public parking signs that there is now to navigate there on the streets. But beyond that, if we're gonna have public parking, we also have to make sure that that public parking is. Uh, like, safe, like with adequate lighting. And the ability to walk from the parking to, to the street, I'm thinking behind the Tabor, for example. What the lighting situation is there, I haven't ever parked there at night. But, uh, I know that like, uh, at the, uh, Ice Palace Park, there's one like dimly lit. Parking thing there, but I just really feel that if we're gonna put it on Google Maps. We should do our due diligence to make sure that they're something that makes people feel safe. Parking in with their families or whatever.
Yeah.
So just.
Actually been, we've actually been thinking about that in terms of the Tabor Opera House parking lot. And our long-term intent is to build a walkway right along what is now Saint Louis Avenue, we have actually officially vacated it. So they can build the elevator and everything, but there will still be a five-foot walkway. Uh, along there and we'll, we want to make that attractive. And we always intended, before they were gonna, you know, extend the Tabor Opera House out. Uh, we were, we were talking about having, uh, landscaping in that, in that. Street, a streetscape with walkability from the parking lot to Harrison Avenue. And that, that's been on our mind for a long time, it's still. That, you know, we don't know when they're gonna build that elevator and we can actually put in that walkway. You know, and.
They need to have, can't they build the elevator even if there is a walkway? I mean, they can act as.
Be able to, but then they're also going to have, you know, an, an area there with seating. And so I, I would like to see the plan to find out what makes the most sense for that as a walkability. Uh, along there, we could always, we could always improve the pavement for five feet next to the wall. Um, and, but, but that doesn't quite cut it.
And that's my point is, is that we have to start thinking about long-term solutions, I mean, we are beyond the. You know, we can't just necessarily put a Band-Aid and put five feet of, of, uh, of new asphalt down, if we're gonna put. Parking behind the Tabor, I think we should actually use some of our parking paving funds and think about like perhaps. Helping out with that sidewalk development and the outside infrastructure, because. What a great way to enter historic downtown Leadville is to park behind the Tabor Opera House. And go down a landscape sidewalk on a, what's a vacated Saint Louis Ave. And then enter the boulevard next to a historic theater, I mean, that is just. To me, my, my mind's eye would be a great way to like. Just say welcome to the downtown, historic downtown Leadville, and so I, I'm, I'd like to have. A, 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 a really conservative, short-term plan to, for a long-term solution, we gotta, we gotta. Start mixing, we gotta start working on this now, but thinking for, you know, something that's gonna last for the next. Forty, fifty, a hundred years. Uh, and to that point too, is I also am a supporter of purchasing. That vacant lot be, between the Elks Lodge and the Western Antique Mall. And the reason why is even if it's a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars there. It does provide parking access right there on, right there on the boulevard, but also we have a stake in. When, when we do have, you know, when we do grow outside and we're looking to sell and maybe find parking elsewhere because we. Our bridges are grown, grown too much, we have to expand again, we can actually. Choose who's gonna purchase that land for what type of activity, and if there's gonna be an infill there, we have more. Uh, say in what's gonna go there, like right now. Whoever buys it can put whatever they want up, I mean, obviously they have to make some sort of historical, um, you know, code. But I'm just saying that like we. It's, it's truly not that much money, it gives us more parking. And then we have a controlling asset within the town that, um, could be used for something else in the future. If parking is found somewhere else, but like.
I, I thought about pursuing that, the reason I didn't is because quite frankly, everybody who parks there are county employees. You know, and I, I just assumed, you know, that, that first of all, if we bought it, then county employees are still gonna park there. You know, and then, then getting into a tip for the county over who's gonna park there would not be necessarily in our best interest. Uh, I, I'm, I, I would be surprised if the county weren't looking at, at purchasing that. That lot for their employees, because that's who parks there all the time.
Well, right now it's not under contract. As far as that last time I saw, and so that is an open viable opportunity for us to. To go under contract, and I'd like to hear the thoughts of other council members on that, because we are here to talk about the parking. And that is an open viable, available lot within downtown that we could do something if we do so support it. Um, if there's, if there's county people parking there, just like the lot on Third Street, there'll be regulations on how long somebody can park there. Right? I mean.
What's it listed at, Max?
One sixty-five.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I, I do agree with Tim's point, I mean, we, we, we can't really solve the problem without adding parking spots and so. Um.
Do you know how big that lot is, Max? You've obviously looked into it.
Uh, Max, Max, it's for sale for one forty.
Oh, oh wow, one forty, okay.
And it's three thousand fifty square feet.
So it's, it's fairly small. Um, we'd have to look at it to see also how many parking spaces would be available there. Uh, you know. What was that, what was that exact number, Tracy? Three thousand what?
Three thousand forty-nine.
Okay.
So one and a half lots.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, it might not be our end-all-be-all, but we do have a controlling interest if we were to purchase it, and I would think that. They're asking for more than it's actually worth for vacant lots of that nature right there. But, I mean, who knows, I mean, like I said, one forty for the city of Leadville. Um. We exceeded that amount in tax revenue in a single month last year. So, uh, I think that that's a, like I said, I'd like to hear from other council members on, on that.
I'm kinda curious if, if we have any metrics on how much new parking would be a meaningful impact, I know anything would help, but. Um, do we have any sort of ballpark, like, we need seventy-five more public parking. Spaces.
I don't know the answer to that, to give you an idea, when I was negotiating with, uh, community banks, that's four lots. And, um, and I figured we'd get twenty parking spaces in there. Be tight, but I thought we'd get twenty parking spaces in there.
Okay.
So it takes quite a, quite a bit of, of land to form meaningful parking. Uh, and so there's three thousand, a lot and a half, let's say we can get. Eight to ten parking spaces in there, and, you know, maybe that's, that's very worthwhile, you know, especially if it's public parking. Uh, you know, uh, enforcement of, of who's parking there, that's a whole different issue, so I'm not sure how we deal with that part.
Eventually, you're, you know, years down the road, it could be a revenue generator in some, you know, at certain times or something, so. I do think that's worth considering. But I, I do like that Tim referenced the parking assessment and, and the people who responded to that said, if. That's a, if we're gonna spend money, that's one of the priorities to spend money on.
Good.
So I feel like there's, there's public input supporting that.
Do we know what's going on at the bowling alley area? I'm not, I haven't kept up with it at all, but from what I heard, fell through with the Taco Bell.
Oh, really? I hadn't heard that.
I, this was all on Facebook, so. Take that with a grain of Facebook sauce.
That's legit though.
Hmm?
Oh, I mean, that could be very real, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen any activity there.
Yeah, I haven't either, and that's why I was like, maybe it's true, but I think maybe that's worth looking into.
It's funny how corporations work and think.
Yeah.
Uh, the Stop and Save, uh, that's, that's on across from Safeway. Uh, they bought that lot there in the rail yards, right there on the corner, and they bought it two years ago. Nothing. They haven't lifted a finger.
Cool, so maybe it's just Facebook rumors.
No. I, it's, it seems like I've heard something like that too, although I don't remember how or why. And I, you know, I believe all rumors.
Um, but I, I think it's worth like looking around, seeing what is available, finding that for dive, going deeper into the. Um, what places could we build more, and I think definitely improving the current ones that we have, so they're more, much more accessible. I mean, for example, the one by the park, um, there's like no real way to get downtown at least reliably. Um, there's no sidewalk that really indicates, hey, come over here, there's a parking spot, so I think. Really looking into improving those areas as well as buying new ones.
We've talked about improving the sidewalk down the side of, of Capitol Hill.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we've talked about it, it's very steep.
It is.
I think in terms of adding, adding parking for people who are visiting, like, people aren't. Necessarily gonna wanna park, say, out by Safeway and walk into town.
Right.
So I think we do need to. Focus on these smaller lots that, yeah, maybe there's only eight to ten spaces, but if we have a few of those, I think that can make. An enormous difference, so if we talk, pick up again with community banks.
Got it.
And pick up again with Lifetime Fitness, I mean, I know, maybe they get some pushback from corporate, but we're the ones who. Give them their, their permits for their events.
We do some leverage.
I think we, you know, like, I don't think we have to go. Get all nasty, but, you know, I, I don't think that we're powerless.
Oh no, it's, it's been a good work in relationship.
And then looking at that, that lot by Western Hardware, I mean, that, those three alone could add significant amount. Of very close, easily accessible parking for people who are visiting town, and then. Some of these larger lots like, I don't know, Taco Bell, one of the things that Tim had talked about earlier was. We also need to look at kind of further out parking for people with trailers and larger vehicles, um, that don't fit downtown.
Well, we, we're working, as, as, as we've talked about, we're working on a fifty-three oh four grant, which is, is a transportation study. Uh, for, for the entire county, including the city, and it's a cooperative between the city and county. Once we're done with that study, and I think it's supposed to be done by the end of the summer. Um, then we can apply for fifty-three ten and fifty-three eleven grants. And those are, those actually supply you with the vehicles and drivers and dispatch. You know, the money's available, C-Dot would love to get us that money, uh, but it's along the lines of what you're talking about. Building an inter-county transportation system that currently we, we have Zippo. Except the senior center does, does have, uh, you know, some transportation, uh, system for, for seniors to get to. Doctor's appointments and, and things like that, and, and to the grocery store.
And that's the same transportation plan that we were following before COVID, right?
Pardon me?
Uh, that's the same transportation plan we were following, we're going to do before COVID, right?
Yeah, but it, it's actually in, in the works right now.
Cool.
Mayor, Max had one more comment.
Yes, Max, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you Lori, so, I, I don't necessarily mean to make, uh, uh. You know, think about Breckridge and us as being anything close to one another, right? But, uh, I do wanna bring to your attention that when I, when I moved there. Twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago, there was this, these massive lots that, that the town owned. Uh, that never had anybody park in it, in fact, uh, they're next to the first bank in Breckridge on Ski Hill Road. And now they're not only where the gondola is, but it's also where that new parking garage is in Breckridge, which is three stories high. Never in my wildest dreams would I've ever thought, when I started there, that I was gonna lose my like favorite parking spot, which was. Dirt with potholes in it, to a massive parking area that now is filled both summer and winter. I feel that we need to think about this strategically for the long term and not think about maybe. Yes, we need parking tomorrow, but what are we gonna need parking in twenty-five years, we're gonna need even more. And eight to ten park spots, yeah, maybe that lot there between Western Hardware and, and, uh. And, uh, the Elks Club is not what we need, but guess what, then we have capital. Because that lot's only gonna go up in value to go and put it somewhere else. Or, you know, and when we do sell it off eventually, or build something there eventually that we may need. Um, housing for our city employees, who knows, I don't know what it is, but it's a relatively. Low-hanging fruit. Um, and, and I guess, I guess that's where I'm at, and I, I wish we could take a straw poll to just see who would be entertaining that. Or if I, if there's any dissenting voices in the, in, on council, where I'm, I'm obviously gung ho for it, I, I wanna hear. You know, those threats or weaknesses to, why wouldn't we pursue something like that? Um. Uh, but, that's my last comment.
We'll, we'll start with Tim, what do you think?
I'm all for any space that we can get our hands on. Um, however big it is, any, anything is gonna help at this point.
You know, another thought that just occurred to me is, the Elks parking lot is never full, I've seen it half-full. That holds the half section of court closest to Fourth Street, I wonder if we could get into a contract with the Elks.
What's their sign say that no parking for Elks members only, which I read as they can't park there.
That's another public-private, um. Partnership that we could, um, enter into or potentially, but I think ultimately, we're going to have to acquire. Some property, so.
Okay, alright. What would you think about, I'm, I'm sorry, let's finish, let's finish here, you know, to Max's point, how, how people feel, so Cisco.
I'm all for it, I think it'll only be more and more rare that downtown properties are available. And they'll only be more expensive, um, and I like, uh, Max's point that. Even if we don't continue to use it as a public parking area, it is, it'll be a valuable asset. Um, for the long term in some way.
Well, I agree with Max wholeheartedly. I think the discussion of using it as a real estate transaction is a bad message to send to the public. Uh, so just, you, I, I, you know, even when we bought the Tabor Opera House, people would come and, and say, we shouldn't be in the real estate business. I'm thinking, okay, we're not in the real estate business, but whatever. Uh, but I would say let's stick to the parking side of this equation, uh, as, as our reason, thank you. Data?
I agree.
Okay.
Fully agree as well, um, and I would assume that we're most likely going to communicate as a parking. Um, parking lot, so I don't think that would be much of a worry, and if it just so happens that we need something else and we build something else there. Because we found parking elsewhere, then that happens.
Okay, Tracy? So, it just occurred to me, I just said something about the Elks parking lot, maybe we could take a run at them the same way we thought about Lifetime Fitness. Where we say, look, we, we'll, let's enter in, into a public-private partnership here, and we'll pave the parking lot. And we get half of it. I don't know.
That's a great approach. Uh, I think during, and you gotta, you gotta give to get.
Yeah, and, and that's the same thing we've talked a lifetime about, uh, and we would, we would use some of our, our paving fund. Uh, to do these things, but it might get us, uh, certainly in the short term. Uh, a great deal of parking, in the long term, to Max's point, if we're thinking big picture about. Bigger parking solutions, we'll probably have to have a shuttle system to accommodate that. Uh, and I, you know, that, that's.
That transportation and grant stuff you're talking about?
It, it might, I, those things might dovetail, uh, and we might be able to use that, you know. Uh, available shuttle system, uh, to do a sweep. Uh, available shuttle system, uh, to do a sweep of parking lots, bringing people to downtown. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud right now.
I'm also thinking, I mean, I don't know exactly what the timeline is for the Justice Center, but when that gets built, a lot of at least the court. Um, and sheriff parking will be out there, and so then the. Western Hardware Elks area may not necessarily be needed.
We would have to figure out how that access would work. Uh, out of there down to Harrison Avenue. Uh, just saying, we'd have to figure it out. I don't know what that what that would mean. It would might be better if we could negotiate. Um, maybe the purchase of that land fronting on Highway twenty-four from the county, if they don't need it. And 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 turn that into a a nice parking lot. That's still within reasonable walking distance of downtown. Um. You guys are adding to my to-do list. I hope you know that. Yeah.
We'll have the city administrator here soon enough, Mayor. You can just delegate that to her.
Can't happen too soon, Max. I I do wanna tell you guys, I I I've, uh, I've talked with her a couple times. Since we we got out of that formalized hiring phase. I really like this person. I I just feel like she's going to gonna do a fantastic job for us. Okay.
I've actually rented skis to her wife.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and they were very excited about coming to this community. And, um, taking on the challenges that we have here.
Yeah.
They had a very nice discussion.
They're pretty neat people.
And, uh, I I would, uh, echo those sentiments. I think she's gonna. Gonna bring some well-made experience and and some, um, ways to solve some of these problems, so looking forward to her getting on board.
Excellent.
Can I confirm that you guys agreed to do a work session on February twenty-second?
That is correct.
I I feel like there's probably some urgency around, uh, acquiring that lot if we want to, right?
No, I I was gonna jump on it. I mean, you know, I I had I had kind of. Be- because county, the county parks there and and it wasn't very big and, you know, I I just decided not to deal with it. But but Max has already looked into it, so I appreciate that. Uh, Tracy's got us some information. Can you tell me who the listing agent is? I mean, I can look it up, but as long as you're there.
Yeah, it's, um, it's not local. It's, um, Slyper Smith and Frampton Real Estate. And the, um, listing agent is Stewart. S T E W A R T. Boutour, Boutour, B O U T O U R. And I'll give you his phone number. Uh, nine seven zero. Six six eight one five five zero.
I will reach out to Mr. Boutour tomorrow to Valo.
Frisco number.
Is, are there any other parking solutions we wanna tackle tonight with respect to everybody's time?
Can we talk just about, uh? I think this is very, pretty straightforward, but event parking. Um, because. The reason I bring it up is because, you know, the large events, especially the race series. Is a big stressor for our locals. And I think the parking part of of is the biggest stressor for our locals. Especially on those event days. Can we, can we move that parking to the community field and the high school and the aquatic center?
I I think they've already done that. I mean, that that is where they they show the parking. Uh, I don't think they've, they've been able to contain. Uh, but but that they do have parking at the community field a- and and the high school and the middle school. Um, and it's usually full as well.
Cause those three places I read in the, um, assessment. Have almost eleven hundred parking spaces.
Wow.
So if we can get Lifetime. To. To make that happen a little better.
Okay.
And I think provide some sort of shuttle service to and from. You know, that's not a big lift.
These are world-class athletes.
Yeah, I know, but.
No, I'm just joking. What would everybody think of invite inviting the exec, the, uh, race director? To our meeting on February the twenty-second? To have that conversation around, okay, you know, we're coming into into the permitting season. In fact, Lori, do they have their TUDs?
No, they do not.
Okay, so maybe it'd be be good to have that conversation upfront. And say, we really need for Lifetime Fitness to figure out how to control. The issue of overflow moving into our downtown. And and these are just people who who don't wanna be inconvenienced by parking, you know, six blocks away. Um, and I understand that, I understand that's the dynamic. Uh, maybe we can make it clear, we we really need Lifetime Fitness to work hard on that. What was everybody think of of inviting Lifetime to the twenty-second meeting?
I think that's great, and we could talk about the downtown lot too in that meeting.
Well, I hopefully, I mean, quite frankly, if we have to move on that sooner, I'll communicate with you. I mean, I would, you know, if if that lot is for sale, if we need to get. Oh, Lifetime's on, yeah. I'll be, I'll be approaching that in the meantime as well, but yeah. Maybe we could add, we could invite Mike Mallory to be here also. Uh, the race director is Tamara. Mike is is kind of the overall director of the race series. We could invite him to be here and and he's, he's a great guy and he likes it. He was very enthusiastic about it, and then he ran into a roadblock.
Just thinking that these events could be a lot more agreeable with the locals, if we can reduce some of these stresses.
Okay.
Uh, fully agree with those sentiments. Since I've lived here, the biggest issue without my parents have had. And basically anyone else who would live here is. Parking, when it comes to these events, is usually even parking in front of their own house, so we would have to go park somewhere else. So I fully agree with the sentiment that usually the events themselves aren't the big issue. It's really. The parking that they take off and the inconvenience of coming back from work just to have a parking spot they can.
I see Tracy has her hand up. Tracy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think, you know, we set a deadline of April thirtieth. To, uh, address the handicap, private parking. I think we need to set a deadline on Memorial Day on. Parking permits within the first two blocks of Harrison. Because those people. Who are not handicapped, but won't be able to park in front of their their house for four months, we need to address that.
I I mean, I I agree with you, it just scares scares me to death because.
But that's why you're the mayor.
I just, no, that's right. I I have to be scared enough for all of us. Uh, because I just, I feel very uncertain about that path, that's all. And and we haven't had anybody who really is an expert on that. Maybe we need to go find that person. And bring them in, uh, to advise us on putting that program together.
I don't want it to slide.
I would refer to the assessment. Another found, um, you know, there are over five hundred members of the community that provided feedback. And sixty-three percent of those respondents think that on-street public parking should be available on first-come, first-served basis. Most respondents disagreed with the idea that on-street public parking should be dedicated to certain users in all and most areas. So we need, you know, I understand that you need to protect the interest of thirty-seven percent. But how are you gonna do that without upsetting the other sixty-three percent? And going two blocks deep on the entirety of the avenue is not the appropriate solution.
Well, I also think, to your point, I think that the solution should be targeted. We shouldn't try and fix problems that don't exist. You know, if there's not a problem on Second Street, why would we law? You know, but if there's a problem on Seventh Street, which what, you know, the hundred block of West Seventh, we know that's, that's a problem area. The West Eighth on the east side also was hundred blocks. So but certain blocks are a problem and certain blocks aren't. Um, and I think we could possibly, and again, we would need someone, I think we can guide that person and say, okay. We we think the first first time out of the box, let's pick eight blocks. We're going to implement this program. I don't know that we need to go two hundred blocks up. I just don't, I just.
Well, I also think, can I just add a little bit to that? I think that if we added more public lots, as we discussed. That that would alleviate a lot of that spillover that goes into the residential areas. So if we can establish some more public lots and then. Assess the need for a permit program. After we can get that, you know, the public lot issue addressed. That that may be a path. That we need to go.
Good point.
Okay, and you know, Tracy, what do you, what do you think about that?
I think there are a lot of options that we can do. We can do it temporarily during the summer. We can allow one hour of parking. If you don't have a permit, there are a lot of options and just say, no, we're not gonna do a permit program. There are a lot of people that live within those one and two blocks that park on the street. They have no other parking. And then the summer, if you can park. Twenty feet from Melanzana, you're not gonna go down and park at the Tabor Opera House. So we need to consider those people and not just say, oh, it's for anybody.
Okay. I I do like that thought. Maybe it's a combination, but also maybe it's, uh, uh, we start, you know. With one hour parking, if you don't have a permit for this block, something like that, I don't know. Get ahead of myself.
So that, we're essentially talking about a resident permit program, and the details of that would be something to figure out.
Where we need to, I I feel like we need.
And we need to not hose the downtown businesses either, cause they need their customers to be able to park somewhere.
That's right, because when you implement a residential parking program, you. Take away visitor parking. And in turn, you're. You're compromising the revenue that you generate from those businesses, so.
Well, Tim, you're saying that you want them to park in the public lots. That's how you get them to go to the public lots. If you allow them to park wherever, you're detrimental to the residents.
Yeah, but we need the public lots first. There isn't, there's an order that we need to follow here.
Well, agree to disagree.
Public lots, they have no other alternative.
I I also, I mean personally, I like the idea of a kind of neighborhood permitting. System that doesn't prevent people from parking there, it just time limits them. Um, I think that would be something, again, that could make parking more efficient. Um, because, oh, you know, a lot of our private parking signs right now are empty. The great majority of the day.
True.
Um, and that pushes the parking pressure on onto other streets. But I I think having a permit system doesn't necessarily mean that you don't let. Visitors park there, you just limit how long they can park there. Um, and then people, residential permits don't have a time limit.
I think that would be the best of both worlds. And and plus in residential parking, uh, a a certain percentage of people in those residential, uh, neighborhoods. Even though they're only in the hundred blocks off of Harrison Avenue, uh, are not necessarily there in the daytime. Um, that's another possibility. Not, that's not true of everybody, but it's certainly true of a certain percentage of people, so. It would open up parking, one or two-hour parking for for visitors. In that block and still have a a a parking permit program. What do you think, Tracy?
I think we need to get an expert in our, to help us figure this out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have, we have three things we're working on. No, actually four. Um, and then we will, we will revisit on the twenty-second, but you may. Hear from me before that, there are things that we really need to consider in the meantime, in terms of land or parking acquisition. What do you think?
This may be naive of me, but I don't think the resident parking permit program would be that complicated.
Okay.
I think, I think we shouldn't let it deter, like, I think, I think we should go for it.
I think the way it's described in this packet is not good.
Really?
Because I, it, because it's asking, like, I don't think residents should pay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I think, yet you still have to ensure that. Everybody on that block gets their permits, because otherwise, how will code enforcement be able to determine? Who's been parking there, who's a visitor, who's overstayed their, say, two-hour limit? And a resident who simply doesn't have a permit of visible.
Right.
That, that's where I think the rub is, is making sure that we include everybody. A- and to make it enforceable, we have to include it.
Uh, Gabby has her hand up. Gabby?
Can I make a comment on the resident permit?
Please.
Issue. Um, so I do like the idea, and I would like Cisco like to think that it's as simple, it's as simple. But I I do worry about the enforcement piece. And then the other thing I worry about is how you deal with STRs and. Full-time residents on the same block. Um, that's a pretty thorny issue. Where like, would they only get a cer- like, like, when I was in a resident permit program in Denver, we had one. Permit per adult that lived in the house, and then you also had a guest permit. So how would you do that in a short-term rental that had an occupancy of eight people? Would they get? Four permits? You know, I just think that's one thing that's really tough about where we live. Where it's any given block, my block is like half STRs, half full-time residents. I just don't really know how that would work. So just just to raise another thorny issue, I apologize.
No, I I appreciate that, Gabby. Uh, I I I forgot that you were on, but thank you. Uh, do you have any suggestions for parking, uh, experts that we might? Uh, contract to come in and help us put a program together?
I mean, I think Mallory did a great job. We could ask her to do a deeper dive on this specific, on the specifics of this program. I mean, I mean, Walker's the best in the business. And I think Mallory did a really good job. I mean, her scope of work was fairly high level. And to look at the downtown parking assessment and make recommendations. But we could go back to them. And ask for a deeper dive. I mean, they already have the context, they already know lead bill really well, so they wouldn't have to spend money getting them up to speed.
Okay, that's a, that's a good suggestion, uh.
And I guess my only, my only concern about like the work that they've done previously, it was over a. Period of time where the parking pressures were not prominent, since we're all using P words now. Yeah, yeah.
Right, like, I was looking back at the study, the fact that it was done in March, I know we had a timeline, but like. We don't have parking mis- issues in March, really, unless it's ski during weekend.
Right.
You know, we need someone to come back and do a similar study in like. Mid-August.
We could, we could also have her incorporate into that, the possibility of public parking spaces. Of a pay system, maybe not something we would implement now, but at least advise us, uh, if we wanna go down that road in the future. Uh, how to do it.
Yeah, another company that I recommend, that I, they did Brex parking study a couple of years ago. That I I worked with them off of that was Nelson Nygaard. And they did a really good parking study in Breckenridge. Which helped Breckenridge, they moved, they they, they implemented a lot more meters. They moved, they, they, they implemented a lot more meters than they used to have based off of that study. And they also moved employee parking, they had an issue where employees were parking on Main Street. And not turning over fast enough, so they worked with all the businesses and created like spots for employees to park. So that Main Street was really used for, um, people visiting businesses. So I thought that was a really good win in that study.
Just, I think it's very least, we need to get our city administrator involved in.
Yeah.
And she might have a lot of answers in terms of residential permits and stuff.
She may have experience along those lines.
Her involvement in my lab and, and all their.
In her job description, one of the, one of the, one of her jobs was as a transportation manager.
So, yeah, I think we're pretty lucky.
Yeah, well. We've got, still have three weeks to wait.
You're here the twenty-second, so.
Yep.
She will? Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Damn.
This is January.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
I'm gonna sign off, but thank you so much for having this discussion. Um, I'm happy to be a part of it in any way that you want me to, so, good night, everybody.
Anybody else have anything they wanna comment on before we sign off?
Um, can I just say that I'd like to second the recommendation for Nelson Nygard, they're an excellent traffic engineering firm.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Have you spelled Nygard?
I assume N-Y-G-A-R-D, but I'll find out.
That's correct.
I'd rather be lucky than good. Max, any last thoughts? Nice work, everybody. Anybody else? Still early, you know? If, if we were in our twenties, we'd be going, we wouldn't even start partying for the two hours.
Well, I don't already been partying two hours, I'll just keep going.
Alright, thanks, everybody. At eight oh-five, we will call this, uh, city council special meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.